We have the meeting to order at 7:01. Okay, let's do the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, alright. Motion to approve the agenda?
The move?
Second?
Sure.
Okay, any proposed executive session? Nope, okay, so we'll take that off the agenda. Any other changes? All in favor? Paused. Public input, we have public.
Hi.
Hi, geez. You look so familiar, Courtney.
Yes, yes, I know.
Alright, so why don't you introduce yourselves, what town you're from, and then tell us why you're here?
Oh, okay. Well, Courtney Allard, Shrewsbury. And we are here because we would like to know more information about the buses.
I'm Chris Allard, from Shrewsbury. And also want to know what's being done about the buses. Because right now, my son would have been on the school bus, except for the next couple of days where it got canceled, for five hours a day.
And then tomorrow's Shrewsbury school buses, tomorrow and Friday, are not running whatsoever. So that's an issue.
You just found that out on the, like, this evening?
Yes, we did, yep.
Well, even the five hours a day prior to this that was communicated to us the night prior to the first day of school, I mean, a bunch of you have kids, would you want your child on the bus for five hours a day?
Five hours a day?
That's insanity. So we'd just like to know what's being done, if there's any steps being headed in that direction?
Yep.
Or are we just going to keep doing the same thing we did last year?
Okay. Would somebody from the board like to address that? I mean, I'm happy to do it.
Ask a question?
Sure.
If you don't mind. No. The length of the ride, is that because routes have been consolidated?
Yes.
It's combined buses for Shrewsbury. So they go through, what, Lincoln Hill, Town Hill, Northham, it's this whole big route that our kids have to be on. Well, our child would be on there for two-plus hours.
So from six in the morning and then getting here at eight-thirty, eight-twenty-something?
Yep.
So late in the morning?
And then being dropped off at, the stop is not even, it has to be a designated stop, which we do understand, but he wouldn't be getting home until five, and then the other day, the buses were running late. So he wouldn't get off the bus until five-thirty. So it's, it's a lot.
Was it the same when consolidated bus routes were happening last year, entire years?
Yes.
Or was it longer this year?
So it's longer? Well, it's about the same time.
Yeah.
It's longer?
It's longer?
Yeah.
He would, yep, five-oh, it was longer, five-oh-three. He would be getting two-hour stop at Shrewsbury by four-twenty-something, four-twenty-five? But, I mean, he, I mean, yeah, it's right here in black and white, you know? Two-forty-five to five-oh-three, or five-thirty, when the buses are delayed even more. And now there's no buses tomorrow and Friday for Shrewsbury.
And I'm sorry, I don't know much about the bus run, so... And he, your student arrives late at the school?
If he rides the bus according to his schedule, he would get on the bus at Marina Lane in Cuttingsville at six-oh-two or something in the morning and would get here at eight-twenty?
Eight-twenty-five.
He's at Mill River?
At Mill River. He would be, he would be arriving late to school.
And that bus does arrive late? Yeah, like, it's like a known thing that that bus comes late. So those kids, oftentimes too, they, like, if they need breakfast, it's really hard for them to do that. The classrooms are supposed to be okay with them, like, going and getting breakfast, but it's tricky.
Just really difficult.
Yeah.
So I, I did have a talk with the cafeteria. I did tell them to serve until nine. We do ask Ms. Bride to make an announcement whenever a bus is late. I know, you know, kids don't like to be late for class, like, legitimately.
And they're missing out.
And they're missing out on instruction. It's not ideal.
I can say that I know, so I, I live on Lincoln Hill, and so my son, when we inquired about when we moved there a few years ago, I was like, "What's the bus stop?" And they're like, "He can go to Marina Lane," which is the first stop, or you can figure out some, you know?
Other stops.
Other stops. And so, we totally hear you, and we were just talking about this in the Personnel Committee meeting right before, just trying to get a little bit more understanding of, like, what do those job postings look like? How are we doing attracting drivers, right? And I think, I do think that Connie and the team is doing everything they can to try to get drivers. They are such hard positions to fill. So we were just trying to put on our thinking hats of, like, are there some more creative things that we can be doing?
I believe there's subcontractors that can do this as well.
Yeah, looking into private, private bus drivers, or privatized bus drivers, or, yeah. I mean, it's, it's concerning.
I know that the day before school, they said this was going to be for the next three weeks.
And now it's four.
And then the four weeks, and now we're canceled for a couple of days.
Yep.
So, as two working parents, I mean, that's, I'm sure everybody here understands, that's real hard to dance around.
It is.
And in my mind, it's completely unacceptable, so...
Yeah, and again, we, I know that, like, we've, we've figured out that Marina Lane is going to be his stop, but I was working with Connie at one point on making sure that, you know, to give, you know, the kid, you know, the independence that I think that he deserves, what about a difference a bus stop? You know, we were looking at Lincoln Hill, but then, then I never, I never heard from her, and it's just, there's that lack of communication, too. Like, we're, we're hearing it the day before, or the night before, there's no buses, or it's consolidated. So we have to wake up at five o'clock in the morning in order to be at the bus stop at six-oh-three, which, you know, I mean, it's, it's just, it's a lot.
If I can, I just want to say I'm really sorry. I think it's important to say that. And just truly say, like, I do know how much that impacts a schedule, like, deeply and personally, because I experience it, too. I don't know if it'll help to know this, but today's last minute was because somebody fell last-minute ill. So it was not about waiting, it was about something that happened. We do really want to do better. We are continuing to look into everything we can, and that does include the fact that we have discussed and looked into the experience of other districts with the subcontractors. We will continue to work to do better.
Good.
Great.
And it's, we have, as of, at the board level, you know, we have been trying to talk about the bus situations basically forever, because it's, it's just getting worse as you're experiencing it, and, you know... Like, the problem for, like, just having local people is, one, if we're, even when we're fully hired out, if you have a person sick, there's a problem. So trying to, like, we're also trying to figure out if there is other options, and trying to see if there's other positions in the school that could also fill those spots. It's just difficult to convince someone to get a CDL and then have them not want to drive a truck all day. You know, because, like, you know, that's, like, the hardest part, that's, there used to be a cohort of people that would be like, "Oh, you know, I can do this in the morning, I can do this afternoon," and there's something else going on in the middle of the day, and those people really just don't exist anymore. And so, looking at alternates is a thing that we can try to suggest, and we can try, the reality is, is that generally, it's just much more expensive. There used to be coach, but like, when Connie's first year, the year before that, we were doing a lot of coach buses for the sports, and it's like, that just eats the budget very quickly. So like, that's the hardest part. But, that being said, for just thinking about, for all of us, and for parents that are feeling this pain, one, we have, during the fall, we're going to, we have community meetings where people can come in and suggest things that they would like to see, like, increases in budget for certain things. And so, if you get more people involved to be those squeaky wheels, we can then more easily add things to the budget and say, "This is not just from us saying this, this is what the community is saying from us." So those will go, that, those aren't scheduled yet, but there'll be two or three of them in the fall, and I think that's a really effective, and I'm sorry, it doesn't solve your problem immediately, and I wish, at this level, we could do that, but I don't know if we can, but it, it sol, it can potentially solve the long-term problem.
We've got the next two days figured out. What we're talking about really is, this is not a new problem. Now, what you're talking about is-
Two years.
A person calling in once or twice, that happens in every position.
Right.
This has been all of last year, several times a week-
Yep.
Calling, "Hey, sorry, you're going to be unconsolidated."
Consolidated buses.
A, B, C, sometimes in the same day.
Yeah.
That's insanity.
Mm-hmm.
Tell me I'm wrong.
No, you're right.
That's wild.
Oh, no, and we, there, this is, yeah, it's, it's been an on, we're, it's not a, we, I mean, I watch Peg TV recordings of them, there are, we're, we're trying to, we, it's not a... There are discussions happening, and I know that's, it's, it's not like we're just trying to push it under and just try, we're, it's just a very difficult problem.
We were just discussing it at Personnel meeting right before this.
That's good to hear, but that's what it seems like from our side of things.
Right, yeah, no, we-
Right.
And we're so grateful you came tonight, too, though, because it is, it is a really important thing. I'm curious, I know this is not solving, like, the bigger thing, I'm curious if you guys would be okay with me personally, like, just reaching out and connecting, because it sounds like you might be kind of neighbors to me, too, so, like, even just like-
Absolutely.
Okay, so I might just reach out and talk, and I'm thinking also, just like, Shrewsbury is often the town that gets hit a lot with these consolidated bus routes?
I think it's the only consolidated bus routes.
Well-
And I did ask about that.
But it's consolidate, doesn't it, though, sometimes, like, impact other routes because it's consolid, like?
Yes.
Okay. So, like, timing can get thrown off in other...
Gotcha.
Um, anyway, so I'm just, I'm, like, maybe I'll, like, ask Mrs. Simonetti how it's going for her, are kids getting to school? And I know it's not just the elementary school, it's here also, but I'm just, maybe we can dig in a little bit more of Shrewsbury.
So I have a stupid question, so elementary, Ed, is it one run?
Mm-hmm. So they go to the elementary school and drop off the kids, and then, and then come up here?
Okay. It's not a direct route if you're in middle school-
Yep.
-or high school to here. Like, it used to be, like, when I-
Yeah, so you have to go to Marina, all the way up to the school-
All the way up to Shrewsbury, then all the way down. And then all the way back down to Mill River.
Thank you. And when did, um, for those of you who've been around, when did it go to one instead of two runs?
It was about six years ago, and it was in, in effort to save money.
But if we had, never mind. I'll ponder. I got ideas.
I want to add, I'm in Wallingford. So far, my kids are very young, and just go to the Wallingford Elementary School, and we're lucky enough that that's like a four-minute drive, so I don't want to, you know, I'm not trying to one-up the difficulties, but we, my home isn't even on a bus route at all. And I know other people in Wallingford and Tinmouth and all over that have similar issues, and there's some other school board members that feel very strongly about this issue as well, so I don't think it's going to go away. I think it's going to continue to be talked about at this level, and-
Hope so.
-presumably at the administration level as well, so...
I don't think we're the only school district that has this problem either.
I understand.
If you read the paper, you, it's just an area that's problematic, you know? We probably collectively aren't paying them enough to draw people in to do the job when it comes down to it. I don't know any other solution. If you dangle enough money in front of them, maybe it will change, I don't know.
Well, that's what I was wondering about, going back to two, having separate elementary and high school routes. I mean, is the money, I mean, one of the problems we're having is the number of hours that people drive, because they want more hours, so if you had to, you would have more hours on the position, so, so... Alright. Just thinking. But that's where, if you came to our finance committee meetings, our community conversations, you know, kind of continue to, to bring ideas, and if that could be one of the ideas, then, you know, then it could be considered as we do budgets. If it was done for cost-saving, you know, maybe that's, wasn't the best place to cut costs, so, yeah.
You can also email, recognizing you are two working parents and busy, so you don't have to physically come in person. It's great that you did tonight, and thank you, but you can email, too, for that, and like, we can keep this in mind as we're thinking about, like, we've been hearing input, you know, when we're thinking about building out the budget.
Transportation for the next agenda, for sure. Okay. Thanks. I didn't recognize you, Chris, but I did recognize Courtney.
Sorry, it's been a long time.
It's been a while. Okay, anything else? Any of the board members, you guys feel like you were heard at least, totally?
Yep.
Sorry we can't solve it?
No, that's alright.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And honestly, like, if you know other people that, and I know it's hard to come in, because it's just time, if you have kids, but it really does help, the more people that come and claim or write emails, not just, like, it's just the reality of how the things work, you know?
Kind of thought we were going to walk into a full room, to be honest.
Yeah. But you also can hyphenate.
I see that.
Yeah, but it's Google Meet, but, yeah, and you can find the link on the school website.
Or, and it should be in the principal's-
In the principal's-
Weekly thing.
Yeah.
Thank you both, so wonderful.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Approval of the minutes from eight-twenty. Motion to approve?
The move?
Okay, second. Anybody have any changes? I thought I saw something, and I should have probably... Oh, gosh, I'm wrong. Oh, it's in, under transact other legal business. It's talk, Jody Stewart-Ruck discusses the release dates following a different pattern, and is asking to release the September release date to October twentieth. Would that be to move or reschedule, or?
Oh, no, the discussion was to move the meet and greet to October.
Okay. So to, instead of release the September release date, to move the meet and greet to October twentieth?
Which we did, and we let the teachers know.
Okay. Other than that, I didn't see anything. Okay, all in favor? Okay. Thank you. You seem quiet tonight. Okay, the budget calendar. That was included with your materials. So we can review that. So I think this is pretty set, the dates have all been updated to this year. I think the next budget or Finance Committee meeting has been scheduled for, I think it's like October sixth, but that is totally off the top of my head, and I don't know. I think it is.
It is, October sixth at six.
Okay, and then, and then we start to get numbers from the state.
And this year is, even though there's a lot of chaos occurring at the state level, for us, it's, nothing really has changed.
Nothing has changed, yeah. Because there's nothing that's happening-
For this financial year.
Yeah, for this budget, this is kind of like, maybe the last budget season, or is it, when does the foundation go in? Twenty-eight? So I think this year and next year, we'll still be doing our budget, but theoretically, if the plans follow by, by twenty-eight, fall twenty-seven, spring twenty-eight, we will not be voting on a budget. I mean, I guess we would still be developing a budget, you know, but we just have a, here's the amount of money, how are you going to spend it, I would think, is how it's going to feel.
Well, the Mill River School Board exists.
Yeah, we don't know yet.
We'd be voting at a regional level, though.
Yeah.
I mean, we'd be voting in, in-town meeting, but as a region.
Yeah, yeah, whatever our district is.
Yeah, whatever that is.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be the, I don't think the Mill River School Board will exist, so it'll be the administration that presents financial figures to the greater district, and they'll form a budget.
Exactly, yeah, it's going to be-
We aren't going to be here to worry about it.
Yeah, well-
As hard as that is to-
Yeah, I know, it's-
Think about it. But it's coming.
Yeah, which, which leads us to our next. I don't think we need any action, I think that was just a, that, that the budget was just, or the schedule was just to alert us to what, how we're going to be doing it, which kind of leads us to Act Seventy-three, redistricting. So far, nothing, you know, I mean, Cheryl is generally going to report on this, but she was unable to be here tonight. But I did want to kind of alert the board to, still, I set a September first deadline for getting the letter out. Well, I guess I don't have a deadline anymore, because September first came and went, but I was able, we were able to deliver letters to Tinmouth for the Tinmouth Times, I don't know what it's called. That goes out to everybody on the grant list, so Gale graciously said, "Drop them off, I'll stick it in there." So those are gone. I just talked to Linda McGuire, the treasurer in Shrewsbury, and the Shrewsbury Times similarly goes to everybody, so I am going to just send her, or, no, so I contacted the editors of the Shrewsbury Times, and they said, "Just send them the file, and they'll put it in there." So that takes care of Shrewsbury. I contacted Wallingford, because Wallingford has a newsletter, I'm not, I just want to make sure it goes out.
Just came out last week, I think.
Yeah, it'll be a month, but nothing, the information in it will still be up to date, and I'm not sure who it goes to, though, I just want to make sure it goes to all the taxpayers or grant, you know, and not just people who sign up for it.
No, it goes to everybody.
Goes to everybody, so-
And we didn't sign up for it, and we get it.
And you get it, excellent. So I'm going to try and do that, which means the only postage we'll have to pay is for Clarendon, because they, we don't have a newsletter, and that's the only way we're going to get it. So at least we've kind of pared down the cost of sending this letter out.
Have we looked to see how many renters are in this, the different towns? How many people will be missing through the grant list?
Oh, like renters? So I think these newsletters go-
I guess I was thinking of Clarendon.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't know how many renters there are, I would, you know, but they don't, they don't, oh, they do vote.
They do vote, they're, they pay taxes in every other regard.
So that, I mean, I can do the voting list, but that won't get every taxpayer-
No, 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 and we'd have the redundancies of voters. No, I'm not suggesting the grant list isn't a good idea. I'm wondering just how many are left out and what, where we can kind of fill in the gaps, whether it be through, you know, the principals' newsletters-
Yes.
That go out front porch forum, or any other thing, so maybe we're duplicating through free means-
Yep.
But to catch the, and, you know, I mean, homeownership in Vermont's like seventy percent, in Clarendon is, can't be much more than fifteen percent of the population, I'd imagine, but that's still fifteen percent of the people that are missing.
Right, right.
This is a huge change, right?
Yes.
And I don't think people understand that it is the, a shift in kind of the Vermont ethos of town governance.
It's going to be a shocker.
And that is, that's the big shock to it all, is that it's taking power away from-
Imagine there'll be some longer bus routes, too.
Yes, speaking of longer bus routes.
That's right.
Yeah. Um...
It's a great loss of local control.
Yeah, I mean, and they're talking about regional middle schools, which will make, that's going to be different for people. Yeah, so we can do front porch forum, I can send it to the principals to put on their newsletters, they've been great about that. I don't do Facebook, if somebody has a Facebook that goes out to Clarendon.
I don't do Facebook.
I mean, I think, I think Clarendon might, they might have, I know the Clarendon Rec Committee posts on Facebook, but I don't know if it's just the Rec Committee, or if it's the whole town, but I can check with Gloria, and then we could do that. So, yeah, so we'll keep, I'm going to keep chugging along, and Rebecca, I want to thank her, she came in and printed out five-hundred copies to bring up to Tinmouth, so, thank you.
You're Rebecca.
Okay, anything else on Act Seventy-three, redistricting? I just want to remind you guys that VSBA puts out tons of little workshops and materials, and there's a map if you want to play with the boundaries of, you know, how many towns would take four thousand students? It's a lot, a lot of our towns to make, get up to four thousand students, so, and they say four to eight thousand, so, geez. Okay. Professional development, oh, Jody is going to entertain us.
It's me, I'm going to entertain you with much more cheerful things.
Yay.
Um, okay, so I want to talk to you about professional development and curriculum here at Mill River, and it is, it's been a good start of the year. As always, our teachers are so highly dedicated to doing their best for our kids, and I am just continually impressed by how well they just dig deep into curiosity, and into, like, the application of, how can we do better? It's been a couple of years since I did just the presentation of, like, the overarching, what are our structures and what do we do? So I just wanted to spend ten minutes, because there's been a lot of board turnover, in giving you kind of that ten-thousand-foot perspective on what curriculum and professional development is all about for our district. So we really center our professional development on three main goals. The first one is high-quality Tier One instruction and the materials to support it. This board has been instrumental in my time in this role in supporting that idea of materials to support it. I came in over the last couple of years and said, "Our teachers want to have a coordinated curriculum in all four elementary schools that is evidence-based. They don't want to be just pulling a worksheet from here and a worksheet from there. Will you support us buying the same instructional materials in every single school?" And, and you guys supported that work. So that only costs us, after the grant funding and the other ways we piece things together, about twenty-five thousand dollars a year district-wide, but it makes such a difference. And after what we save on copying, it's probably a net zero, but it has made a big difference in student achievement, and the kids get so excited every year when they open those beautiful color workbooks. That coordinated curriculum, the middle school teachers have talked about how it is starting to feel like a difference. So when I came into this position, we were not explicitly offering science and social studies at the elementary level. We were saying that those were embedded in our literacy instruction. It is my strong feeling that we need to be teaching science and global citizenship to our elementary kids. It is a huge ask for our elementary teachers to fit that into their already-packed schedules, but they've been great about doing that. Our middle school teachers love that because we have a coordinated- Our middle school teachers love that because we have a coordinated curriculum with a month-by-month curriculum calendar that is vertically aligned from grades K all the way up to sixth grade that says, all the kindergartners are teaching these themes and these units in October, and then all the way up till the end of sixth grade, that when kids get into seventh grade and they all join together at this middle school, they've had a common instructional experience. It used to take a good bit of seventh grade to get everyone kind of on the same page. We are still in that curriculum coordination process, right? Because it's only been about four years of doing this work together. But because teachers are the ones that decided on those curriculum maps, not, you know, central office, because they get time together at release days to look over those and edit them together, they're truly bought into that work, and it is making a difference in the student experience. Because we're using the same instructional programming year after year also, kids don't have to relearn the way things are done. So they know that this is how we write in the Bookworms program, and this is how we do shared reading. So they don't need to relearn that this is how this teacher does it, and this is how that teacher does it. That saves so much instructional time, and that allows kids to move forward at a quicker rate. And then the third piece is interventions and supports that make a difference. So we have become much better year after year at looking at students' needs and aligning the resources we have to those needs. Some of that work has been done by this board. So, you know, today I met with a state-level math coach and our math interventionist, because we're talking about how we get a universal screener for elementary math out to all of our kids, the way we have been doing for the last couple of years for ELA, and start doing this process for math that has led to such great gains for ELA. Some of that work happens in ESTs, where we're creating, like, if a kid might be slightly behind, we're creating a very specific goal that says, what is, what can they do in a six-week session that we can track their progress and come back together as a team? Something else that I'm really proud of is, we have district-wide a practice for EST for gifted students, or students who are accelerated. So not only if a kid needs extra help, are they going to one of our teams and getting specialized plans, but if a kid is excelling in a specific area, they're able to go into that team and have specialized programming in that way, too. And that is not something that my colleagues in neighboring districts are yet able to support in their systems, in all places. So these are the programs that we are using, Bookworms. You know, I was speaking to a teacher today that said, I was one of the last believers, and I want you to know, I am fully convinced. And that is, you know, that makes my heart so happy. This was a program that is, again, research and evidence-based, that was chosen by the teachers, that we've adopted district-wide, that year after year, our data is showing improvement, and that we have brought all the way up through eighth grade. Global citizenship, we're using TCI, mystery science for science.
Can you tell us what TCI is?
So TCI, I don't remember.
Okay, never mind.
It's just some initials, it's, it's evidence-based. I offered educators three choices that were aligned to the Massachusetts global citizenship progression, because Vermont doesn't have one. And so that was the closest that we could kind of get. We do have it aligned with our Bookworms units now, so if they're reading a specific book, it is then aligned that they're going to do that, you know, that unit of study to align to that historical time period. Mystery science, educators love because it's really hands-on, and we use grant funding from our federal grants to buy the activity kits, so teachers don't have to go out and buy pipe cleaners and baking soda and all the little things they need, it's already pre-portioned for them. Because some of this is just about saving educator sanity and time. And Eureka, too. So last year, when we decided to change our, our thinking, because we're, we're rolling on literacy to how do we do the same cycles of improvement for math, the first thing we looked at was, do we want to change the math program? We've been using the same one for about a decade. So we did, we did a curriculum review, and we found that this one, it still rates, like, in the top three in the country for evidence-based practices. So the, the teacher team said, no, we actually don't want to change the curriculum, we just want to really look at our practice. So this year, we started in August, we met for a full day in the elementary level, saying, let's look at our specific practice, let's look at what the evidence says, what are specific things we could be doing? So one, one thing we talked about was automaticity, which means like recalling your math facts. Are there times in the day that we can bring in fun math fact practice? Whether it's like walking in the hall together as a class, or at the end of snack time, can we do more math game stuff? Can we graph the weather at morning meeting? And so teachers looked at what evidence-based, but fun math things there were, and then looked at their data of incoming kids, and then looked at their first unit of math, and linked up all of those things together to plan class-wide interventions for the first two weeks. And that's what I mean about, like, they're so dedicated to this improvement science of like, okay, what do we tweak next? What do we tweak next? And that's really, like, that's masters, right? When they're just doing such a good job, but they just want to get better, better, better.
TCI is the teachers', the Teachers Curriculum Institute is the provider of.
Thank you.
These, they drive me crazy when, in education, it's all, guilty of this all the time.
Yeah.
And so.
Thank you.
I wanted to know.
And I would just, for the, you know, I think for, for the math, I almost think it's a, it's a different kind of heavier lift, because Bookworms is like, hey, you know what, as a country, we were fundamentally teaching how to read incorrectly.
Right.
Like, we had all bought into this system, and it was just wrong.
Yeah.
And so going to Bookworms is like, oh, you should be seeing huge gains. And where math, the hard lift is, there's not a revolutionarily new way to teach math.
No.
But you still have to figure out how to do that.
Yeah, it's going to be murkier, but they're just as dedicated.
Yeah.
Middle grades continue to do amazing work with always thinking about what they can do better with SEL. That's the hardest grades to teach, because you are teaching all of the academics.
SEL for everybody.
Social emotional learning. Sorry, I used to have a t-shirt that said, anti-acronym Association of America with the acronym. And they're, they're teaching young adults how to adult, too, at the same time. So that is a hard grade band, but they do really good work with that. They're doing a lot around positive behavioral interventions, explicitly teaching character, continuing on Eureka and Bookworms up through, and then they have to connect in those middle grades to both the elementary and the secondary folks, to make sure that that curriculum is all aligned. In the high school, just working on transparency in this age of kind of media discussion of trust for, for public schooling, one thing that we've done is make sure that every single syllabus for all of our high school and middle school courses are available online on our website. So any teacher can see what core, what our books we're using, what major assessments, what our grading practices are. Our entire course of studies is on there. Making sure that we're constantly thinking about our grading practices and proficiency-based learning, and, and talking about how to tweak those so that we're best-serving kids, doing PLCs once a month that are really data-focused, so looking at, at assessment together, and, and improving every single time, and continuing on with our advisory programs. So for example, the entire ninth grade is being taken to Bethany Berches for a day camp, team-building experience in two weeks, and this is the, I think it's the third year, maybe the second year that, that Ed Robbins has organized that, because he just truly believes it's a great way to start high school, to bring them all together. This just is, this year's professional development, in case you were wondering, so we have those PLCs, we have the release days, and we just make every single moment that we are taking away from parents' lives when we're saying, you know, please. We do offer aftercare for those half-days, and I'm proud of that, too, but if we're gonna not be instructing kids, we have to make sure those minutes matter. So this is what we're doing. Administrators have to learn every year, too, because we need to continue to get better. So we collectively decide on what our growth area is, and then do a series of professional development ourselves. This year, we're focusing on collective leadership skills, so there's an entire plan with agendas, with shared, shared plans there, and we share that with teachers, too, so they know, anytime we ask them to do anything, we hold ourselves to the same level of accountability.
Can I just ask for a quick, of, when you were organizing that, because like, one of the things we heard from teachers in the past few years is just like how those, how those topics were picked, or like what the specific meetings are? Is there, did anything change in the past couple of years of how that has developed?
Yeah, so, a few years ago, teachers said, you're not meeting my needs, want more feedback. So the last three years, how I have done it is, in the spring, I send out a survey that says, how was it this year? What do you want to learn about next year? Then I take the top six or seven topics from just this open-source brainstorm, and then usually sprinkle in one or two things from the data about what we need, put them together in a plan, and then say, this is what the data says, your data and mine, this is the potential topics, now vote on that. Because we got to narrow it down a little bit, right? Because some people will always write, nothing, leave me alone in my classroom, right? No matter what. And then from there, I create a draft plan, and say, okay, now, in May, I send that out in the Curriculum Weekly, and it says, okay, this is our draft plan, make any suggestions you want to on this, and then that goes out in a final plan in June. So for example, two years ago, one educator said, we don't have enough subs to go to workshops, and we need relicensing hours. So you need to fix release days so that we can get professional learning credit out of them. And another educator said, I don't really care about certificates that much, but I care that I don't have to do what the majority wants, because it never fits me. So that's where this idea of STRAMs came out of. So STRAMs are, for three of the release days, we offer this entire giant menu, and every single one of these has a professional development certificate out of it, because it's new learning. And you can pick from any of these and go to the one you want. So restorative practices, a book study on Teach Like a Pirate, discussing sensitive topics, design your own project if you hate every single one of these, AI for instruction, strategies for teaching kids with ADHD, CPI, rural literacy, place-based education, and social capital, like, so this is like our attempt to say, like, we will give you choice. So now we have it structured so that you get some time with your grade level or department, some time in your building, and then you get choice for your other days. And this has helped, this has helped, we're up to like 65% approval rating, which is pretty high for PD.
Yeah.
So, is it working? Ways we assess whether or not it's working, teacher feedback, formative and summative data, our local common assessment plan, which is all those common assessments we give to all kids, educational leader walkthroughs, and then we have a curriculum work group of teacher leaders who just tell us honestly, that's a bad idea, this is a better idea. And what is working? Bookworms is working great.
Yep.
Can I just ask, is it solicitor teacher feedback, or you just take teacher feedback as it comes?
So, yes and. I, I think it's important to ask for teacher feedback in multiple ways, and also take it as it comes.
Right, but you have, you have some sort of form that they're completing on a regular basis?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then last year, somebody said, well, surveys don't really give you the real feedback, so I went to a faculty meeting at every building.
Uh huh.
And then somebody else said, yeah, but we're not going to tell you in a group.
Yeah.
So I tried to go, just like wander the hallways a little bit more, right? So like, but like, that's, that's the work. The work is to keep trying to meet people where they're at, in the same way it is with kids. Like, you gotta, you gotta talk to people how they want you to talk to them, and just keep trying, and not get frustrated if you're not there yet. In my opinion. And then, you know, I do have, I have some amazing educators, because I've been, this is my, I don't know, 12th year, 13th, 13th year here, that I've grown up with at this point, that are comfortable enough just sending me a text and being like, well, I totally disagree with you on this, you know, and those are my cornerstone people that like, keep, you know, they'll just give me in-the-moment feedback, and they are usually right on.
I was just wondering, like, whether it was, whether it was structured or.
Structured and.
Okay.
I'll take any feedback from anyone, anytime.
All right, well, we're going to do the input.
But I have to take structured, yes, yes ands, but I have to take structured feedback, too, because that's how I actually build plans.
Yeah.
I think coordinated curriculum and the support for the curriculum, I think that's really working. Our teachers dedicated to their improvement science, and having those multiple modalities for feedback, those are the things I think are working. That's it, that was longer than I meant for it to be.
Can I ask a question about EST, is that the, so, because I think David would ask this question if he wasn't here. I know, so my daughter is about to go into a meeting for an EST about doing some advanced stuff. She happens to be going to the school counselor, and for an unrelated thing, and that's kind of how the trajectory that that counselor suggested that they should look at. If my child, like, is that a thing that, if she wasn't going to that, I don't know if I would, you know, I might mention, oh, you know, she might need a little extra work or something like that. How, if, how, what's the pathway for the kids that are doing, like, seem like they're doing top percentile work? Like, is there a way for them to get in, or is it like a parent normally having to advocate for it? How does it normally work?
Yeah, so, our teachers are constantly doing what we call like Tier Two interventions up and down, right? So our teachers are constantly adjusting and giving challenge things to the kids that are working higher, and giving extra supports to the kids who need a little bit more. We use ESTs when a kid is working at a different enough level that we need to actually, like, change structures for them. So usually, whether we need to change structures up, or in the more support category, a teacher does that.
Yeah.
Recommendation. A parent always can.
Yeah.
But usually, it's a teacher that says, like, for example, like, oh, hey, my kid is, or, I have a kid in my class that is only in fourth grade, but I think they're gifted in languages, I want to ask if we can get a resource to Duolingo, the full subscription. That would be like a mon, a money thing, has to go to EST. You know, they need an extra amount of time with a person, has to go to EST.
Okay.
But like, you know, at the same time, like, if, if the kid is just, like, my middle kid read the entire AP Lit list in the back of her fifth-grade classroom, that took no extra resources.
Right.
Didn't need an EST.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I just didn't know what the, what the qualifier was.
What the qualifiers? The qualifier for anything is if we need to assign, or if the teacher is stumped. Because the EST is also like a brain trust.
Source, yeah.
Like, I'm stumped about, like, let's take it to the group.
Mm-hmm. Great, thank you.
I've been trying to figure out how to word this, because it's like genuine curiosity with, and like not knowing, you know, never being a teacher. Is the standard curriculum, the coordinated curriculum, is it still, are teachers feeling like they have the space within the curriculum to still be like creative and do the special projects, or add to it, or, you know, I know a lot of teachers like love that piece where they get to bring their own magic. Yes, so it definitely takes away some of that ability, but there's still some there. So I think that we've talked about how we're, now that we're a couple of years into that coordinated curriculum, teachers have more confidence in where they can shuffle it around a little bit. And, you know, some of the language that I use, like, Bookworms we need to use with fidelity, but TCI and mystery science, we don't. You need to get to the same themes. Do it in the way that you need to, if that makes sense.
Yes, yeah, that's helpful. Thanks.
Do you else have any questions? Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
That was very helpful. I, you know, the only thing I would say is this is where consolidation has helped because when I was back in the day, each school had their own curriculum. And even though central office of the curriculum coordinator for the district would be out there trying to get people on the same page. They go, well, we really like the way we're doing it and it works for us. And so what Jody's done to get all of the schools on the same curriculum, it was not an easy task, I'm sure.
It's a major cultural shift.
Yeah, it is a cultural shift. So, thank you, Jody.
Made things a lot easier in seventh grades like that.
Oh, for sure. I'm sure. All right. Everybody good? Move on? Okay. Before we get to the committee reports, I put a agenda item for discussion. Committee motions for full board action. I think, I just want to get this clear in my head. I think if it's something major, we'll just set an agenda item for it. Like for instance, when the finance committee says, okay, it's time to vote on the budget, then we have that as an agenda item. But sometimes committees come and they have action items, like policy always has action items. But we don't, we don't list what those action items are. And I don't think it needs to be in depth, but it could be, because it has discussion item and personnel, like approved contracts. You know what I mean? So I was just wondering if you felt like we needed to put that level of specificity on the agenda? It's not hard to do or are we okay with just saying, policy, action, personnel?
Cause like the, cause buildings and grounds, a lot of times when we're bringing stuff to the board, it's not part of our committee reports. Normally it's part of the agenda.
Yeah.
Usually because there's some explanations that are going on with it usually. And then like, and then policy, we used to list, you know, every single time. And then personnel would have been the outlier where it's just contracts are going. And that's the only reason why I asked when the policies weren't on there, just because it was like, oh, this is. But that's not, that's just how it was. I'm not saying that's how it was, right? That's just for buildings and grounds, I don't think we normally ever bring stuff there.
Ask for an action at the committee.
Usually it's all, yeah. Yeah. And normally it's because it's a big number. So I think maybe that's one of the reasons why it's just its own, you know, we put it up in the agenda. For buildings and grounds at least.
Okay. Well, I'll just.
I think it's a generally positive thing to be as transparent and communicative as possible. But it's easy to go, you know.
Overboard.
Overboard and take that too far and put excess burden on.
So let's just leave it at the way it is. But if in your committee, you're looking for a specific approval from the board, doesn't necessarily have to be a separate agenda item. But if within your committee report, you expect that you're going to ask for an action, just kind of what that action is.
Well, and just, I'll speak from personnel as I'm thinking about it.
Right.
I wouldn't see any problem with putting contracts.
Yeah.
Here in this board policy. Or in the.
In the committee.
Yeah.
Under the committee.
Yeah, because that's, and we have contracts pretty much on a regular basis.
Right. Yeah. So.
So I, I don't, I think that would be a good idea, actually.
Okay.
My other question is when I create the agenda for personnel, should I be putting down what discussion, like on, on the regular agenda here, on the board agenda, you have discussion and then discussion action. Should I be putting that on the personnel committee agenda?
I think so, because I think technically unless you warn it, you can't take action. I mean, I don't think, it's a committee, so I'm not sure it's quite the same. But I think it's a good idea that you're going to take action on contracts. You're going to discuss superintendent evaluation.
Is it not implied by having, like for policy, if we just like have F30 on the agenda? Is that not implied?
On the.
On the policy committee agenda, let's say.
Right. But do you take action to move it to the full board?
May or may not.
Yeah, we might. Like that's like, that's kind of the, often that's the point.
So if you think you might take action, then I think you put action. If you think it's just discussion, you know, I mean, I think as the chair, you have a sense of where it's going. I don't think anybody's going to call you out for not putting it or, you know.
Well, and because I think there's some policies that we just keep bringing forward.
Yeah.
And we're not going to take action on them until.
But then we might.
We, good point. So I don't know.
Yeah. Well, at that point, if you want action and the board's going to have to take it, you could just pass it to the full board. I don't want it to get too complicated. I just want it, it was just, you know, you got, whoever's chair of the committees, you guys make that decision. I just wanted to, I was wondering about, you know, how, how we were doing.
I'm fine with contract.
Okay.
This one personally.
Okay. We will do that.
Yeah.
Policy, I can say when we have policies that we're going to, for approval, if you want.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Added somehow though, it seems like.
There's just a, I think there was like a transition mix up that one that I was remote and when we couldn't hear that one. I think that was just like a transition with, honestly, I think Brian being gone and stuff. But usually it's pretty seamless and I think hopefully it will be.
Yeah. Okay.
I think just for thinking of like committee stuff, like our template, like we don't have the same like agenda template where we have like, you know, agenda item and then overhear like action or discussion. So I guess, you know, you could, I was, because I was just looking at, I was like, I don't think it's the same. So I don't know, you know, either you'd have to put it in that or we changed the template, but.
Yeah.
I can, I mean, for me, again, and I can only speak for myself, but it's pretty easy because most instances we're only going to take action on contracts. In, in personnel. Most everything else, like at tonight's meeting, most everything else was discussion.
Yeah.
Right. And I'm trying to think of like in buildings and grounds, are there times that we get brought things that aren't on the agenda that we put? I feel like most of the time, if it's something that we're putting forward, we've already put it on the agenda. So you could put action on that. I don't, I can't remember a time where.
Yeah, because, yeah.
Yeah. Cause usually we know about it ahead of time.
Yeah. And we generally, the bids are there and we say, okay, let's take it to the board. We're ready to take it to the board now. We don't like approve or disapprove or take action on it generally, right?
I think we do, we vote on paths to move it to the board.
Yeah. Okay. So just keep it in mind and if it fits, don't, you know, don't go, I mean, I'm not going to try and do it either, but I just was thinking about that. Having gone to another municipal meeting and going, how did they do that? But anyway, okay. So let's do committee reports. Personnel.
I have a contract.
Speaking of.
We did meet tonight. So I have a contract for Terry Crossman, 1.0 full-time equivalency, educational support staff. And I would make a motion that we offer Terry this contract.
And you can call for the motion because we don't need a second.
We don't? Okay. So not needing a second, discussion. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. And I, you know, now I'm thinking more, which is always a scary thing.
Oh dear.
I know.
Sorry, I didn't mean to do it to you, Lynn.
Should I be, when you talk about reporting out, I'm not going to do it tonight. Should I report that, for example, we discussed the superintendent evaluation, exit interviews, the athletic director position, bus drivers? Should I be saying that here? I mean, we didn't take any action.
And the agendas are posted.
And the agendas are posted. Okay.
I don't know. I'm just saying.
Yeah, no. I think you just did. Well, I know.
And I feel like.
But I usually don't.
Because I'm not sure everybody on the board reads every committee agenda.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying like, do we need?
And the public certainly doesn't know. And I think one of the things that, like for instance, we're not going to talk about bus drivers tonight. We did during public comment.
Right.
But, you know, you're kind of announcing to the public that during committee, we're talking about bus drivers.
And it will be in the minutes. Right.
And I think that's a good thing. So, you know, I, I don't, you don't have to repeat the agenda, but I do think it's like, those are the ongoing things. And then if there's something to report out, you can report out specifically, but.
Or if it's like, if you feel like it's an important thing, like, like I would ask the question, like if I knew you were talking about bus drivers, I would say, well, what's our current, how many, how many bus drivers are we down? Or like, what did you, like that kind of thing, I think is important, especially if it's a topic that's, that's brought up.
Right.
So saying that, what, what were you talking about? But like, how many bus drivers?
And actually, and here's the thing, it wasn't actually on the agenda.
Yeah.
It came up under other business.
That's true. Yep.
So it's.
When we were talking about, we were just talking about open positions and then it came.
Yeah.
So how many open positions for bus drivers are there?
I didn't, just the van driver, as far as I know, open, but there's several bus drivers who are out. And that's the problem.
Physical issues.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
There's probably three or four.
Yeah. I mean, it's.
Yeah.
So we're struggling.
Things difficult, to say the least. And as we said, we, as Carol said, we hired a van driver at the last meeting and then that person chose not to drive. So we're short of, well, multiple people have been driving a van, but we don't have a van driver.
We don't have a van driver.
So would this be?
And that happened a day before school started. Right, Jody?
So I'm going to put transportation, bus drivers slash bus drivers on our next agenda. And hopefully, yeah, so if anybody has any brainstorms.
Do you need a CDL to drive the van?
No.
Oh, you don't?
Do not.
But if you're over eight kids, you do though, right?
Yeah, but the van, they're only driving.
You can only have one or two students.
Yeah, I forget what the number is. It might be four. But.
Cause that, because we've, in the past, in like budgets, it was like, well, what if we start buying more smaller vehicles? Does that be helpful? But then they're like, but if you're over a certain amount of kids, then it doesn't matter.
Right, like a smaller bus. But this, I don't know what the van is. I haven't seen it. But I know that right now it's transporting, you know, like two or three kids. So from program to program and you do not need a CDL. So if anybody knows anyone that would like to drive a van, there's, it's like a morning and afternoon and there's a break in the middle of the day for a couple of hours, but.
But you can't do it if you're.
Apparently Gray was interested.
Who?
You can't, you can't do it if you're on the board.
No, but if you know anybody who's looking a little, you know.
I'd do it.
Joy.
I couldn't.
Joy of being with children and, you know, driving in a nice van.
We hire you in a week.
Okay. Policy.
We have not met since the last board meeting, so we don't have any action to take tonight. We have our next meeting, oh, did you want to say the next meeting is for personnel? I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, I do. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I should.
The next meeting for personnel will be October, the first Wednesday.
The first.
It's the first.
The first. At six, six o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not to interrupt, I did send updated coaches list to you. I don't know if you were able to get to that.
Yes. Oh, yes. And we tabled it.
Tabled it? Okay.
So I'll talk to you about it tomorrow. We, we were unsure. We just, you and I and Chance need to work together on clarifications.
More moving parts than we could handle.
Yeah, it was very, we just couldn't tell who had a contract and who didn't yet. Thank you.
Thank you Rebecca for bringing that up.
Thank you. Okay.
Cause it was on the agenda.
Yes.
So policy, we are, Rebecca helped us, thank you, warn that we have a special committee meeting or like a smaller group of us are meeting workshop, thank you, on Monday at 5:00 PM, this upcoming Monday, September 8th, to do the classification piece with our policies. And then our regular meeting is at 6:30 on September 9th. And then I asked Jody if she doesn't mind just giving us like a little like pulse check, how's it going just one week really into school?
Cell phone.
With the cell phone policy.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah, it was a really smooth start. So the River High School staff brought all the kids into the out of town to start the year and just explain the expectations around it. First day, three kids needed their cell phones to go live in the cell phone condo in the main office. That's it. Yeah. And kids are just getting used to it. So the lunches have been quite a bit jollier than usual. Lots of, lots of cheerful hijinks. But it is, it is going really well. And so we are, yeah, overall everyone is pleased and, and the kids are complying and it's going well.
That's excellent to hear.
Good, good, good. It's actually the, probably the most prevalent thing is if an adult, like administrators still need their cell phones out because we, we have emergencies constantly, right? So I cannot tell you how often they're calling us out. Like, how dare you?
Live in the moment.
Yes. Thank you.
Y'all set?
Okay. Okay. Building and grounds.
We didn't meet since the last time. I just want, I haven't gotten a chance to say it, is that in Tinmouth, the town got grant funded a timber framed pavilion that is now on the built and at the school property. That's a 30 by 60 or something like that. Picnic tables underneath it. And so it's like a, a brand new space that, that school didn't have to pay for, town didn't have to pay for.
That's great.
And it's just, it's a, the, the whole bunch of community members came and built it with the guidance of some timber framers and it.
That's very cool.
Yeah. It's just another, it's just a great, another outside controlled space for, for the kids.
Josh was right up on the roof.
I wish. I busted my finger the day before, so I couldn't.
Monday I rode on the smooth pavement of Clarendon Elementary.
That's pretty good too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And we just generally, so, yeah, and we already talked about it. Cause I just wasn't here for the last meeting.
And you, and Tinmouth has outdoor education.
Right, yeah.
That would be really.
It's great because they already have, they do a lot of stuff outside and it's the outdoor classrooms that they have are literally just them in the woods and they've created structures and stuff like that. But this is like, there's shade, there, like you can be out, it's an all, you know, you can do it in all weather. There's tables that you can work on if you're, you know, it's a little easier to work on stuff. So it's, it's just another great.
Great enhancement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And our next meeting is October 27th.
Right. We're going to get a meeting. Community engagement. Sarah's not here, so I think we'll.
There's a meeting scheduled, I can tell you.
Yeah, when is that?
Community conversations. It must be past it.
17th.
Seventeenth.
At six.
Six o'clock.
Right before the board meeting.
Eight. His third. 10th, 17th? Yep. Okay. And finance pay orders. Who would like to read these? Because I'm not sure which numbers.
Oh, you just read them all?
Oh, okay. Accounts payable warrant for nine, three, 2025 general fund, General fund, $75,350.
General fund, seventy-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. Food service, uh, one thousand, sixty dollars and nineteen cents for a total of two hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. There was no student activity totals. And the payroll warrant, um, six hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-two cents. Can I get a motion to approve the warrants? Thank you, second. Rich, okay. Any discussion? All in favor? There we go. All right. Transact other legal business on-
Just, just for the, um, the next meeting for finance-
Oh, sorry.
Is October 6th, at six o'clock.
Thank you.
We said it earlier, but-
Yeah. Clarify. Okay, transact other legal business, I just wanted to, I don't know, you probably all got the email from Kristen Simonetti that the preschool at Shrewsbury was approved for five stars. It's a, the highest level possible for quality recognition in early childhood education. And, um, I know it's a lot of work. The teachers actually do the work to, um, do the application, fill, fill in the data, make sure everything meets the criteria. And so, that's a, five stars is the highest you can get, and it's not easy to get, so-
And Wallingford as well, five stars.
Okay. Congratulations to those preschool teachers for their-
And that's so important, that-
Oh my gosh, yeah.
That kids get a good start.
For sure.
They get a good start, they'll coast the rest of the way, I don't know if it's a coast.
I don't think that's true.
Okay, anybody else, any other business for the good?
Fifty is continuing.
Thank you.
Um, there was an ad in the paper-
I saw that.
Uh, Saturday.
Full page.
Um, we're going to get a banner out front. Um, we had a meeting today, we get another meeting scheduled beginning of October. Um, and we're moving along.
That's great, yeah, that, the ad was very exciting.
That was cool.
Yeah. You go, hey, wait, that's Mill River.
Well, and we had, I guess I should put a plug in here, because we had, I don't know, there was eight or ten sponsors that basically-
Yes, yeah, I noticed that.
Paid for the ad. And they were all former students with businesses locally. I mean, it, it was, it was really cool to, to see that.
Yeah, it's very heartwarming. It's nice to know they want to stick around.
Yep.
Okay. All right, agenda building, we'll definitely put transportation on there.
Can we ask for, like, so, you know, they explicitly said, well, what about private, you know, contractors? Can we have, like, what does that, what does that number look like? You know, so we can say at least we saw it?
Okay.
Or, like, and I don't even know what it is.
So, we can attempt to get a quote from Betcha? I'm not sure if we'd be able to get a full quote in two weeks, though.
Yeah, I understand.
Because the, um-
I did do a quick search while we were talking about it, and there is another one too called First Student that services, um, in Rutland County. So there might be a few, uh, or maybe, maybe, there might be, um-
So I think that would be something that Cheryl, I think, and Jody would work with Stan on getting. Um, because, I mean, transportation, that's part of the building and grounds, but I don't think-
Not really, it's not really, it's, we're just, we just spend that surplus money, it's really hard. We talk about, we talk about buildings and grounds in buildings and grounds.
Right.
But it's not really the purview of buildings and-
And just to clarify, we're not asking for a system-wide transfer, right? Because that's a bunch of contracts.
Yeah.
And HR, and-
Yeah, not that.
We're just asking for-
That would be a, that would be a further finance conversation.
Temporary subcontract.
Temporary subcontract only.
I just, I don't want anyone being like, what the, what are you doing to my job? But then temporary contracts only.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
And Jody, like, does it feel not to put anything else on Connie's plate? But does it feel like it could be helpful, even if she just was to, like, tell Cheryl and Carol, like, here's what we've done, so, like, just so the board isn't like, woo, this is a great idea. And she's like, yeah, I've done that, I've done that.
Done that, yeah, so I think, we'll just, it's two weeks, that'll give, um, if, and it's going to be on the agenda. And so we'll ask the administration to bring us as much information as they can about possibilities for alternate, um, ways. I'm curious about having two bus routes, that certainly would shorten the, um, you know, have an elementary and a high school run. That would definitely shorten the rounds, it sounds like, so.
I just wanted, if we're done talking about that, I don't want to cut off.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want to, you had sent out an email, uh, this mor, late this morning about the message from Greater Rutland County Supervisory Union.
Yeah, that was supposed to go under Act 73 redistricting. Can we circle back to that? What's our time?
Yeah, I just didn't want you to-
Oh, yeah, we've got time. Yeah, so I sent out that email, had received that from the Chair of the Greater Rutland County School Supervisory Union. So they're one of, which is kind of interesting. So they're a supervisory union, they have all the schools in their supervisory union are their own school districts. So Rutland Town is their own school district, West Rutland, Proctor. I think, um, Wells and Middletown Springs are one district. Um, but they, you, and I did send that out. And they have made it a board, um, motion to work with other districts to kind of decide what kind of structure we could set up with that meets the criteria for the redistricting that the state is requesting. Um, so I sent that out to you guys, um, and I'm waiting for Eric to get back to me about what he thinks, um, how he would like to proceed and move forward. I think, you know, he talked about his board meeting with our board, um, so that would, that might be a possibility. I also contemplated in my own little brain, um, having an ad hoc committee that maybe one member from each of our other committees become kind of the- if we're gonna, yeah, if we're gonna liaison, that we have some people who are willing to do that, um, as a group. So I, that was just, I'm throwing that out there as an idea, because I know you guys are, are good at thinking about that kind of stuff. But, um, so I will keep the board updated, um, on any other communication around that, or if it becomes more of a countywide discussion, um-
Right, because in his, in the, in what they approved was that they were just, they were looking for, like, hey, let's just make a super, super-
Supervisory union.
Supervisory, somehow that's going to qualify. And I think, I think it's great, especially because we were talking, supervisor union, I don't necessarily think is great. It's great that we're, that communicating is starting. Because I think at the board, when we were doing the goals, like, that was one of the things that was brought up. It's like, hey, we at least need to reach out to people.
Yeah.
So it's like, I think, you know-
Try to advocate for-
For what it is.
Something that we want, yeah.
But the question is, is doing, I, I mean, I always fall back on, do we know what we want?
That was kind of what I was going to ask, is do we want to cooperate with them? I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
I don't know my answer to that, really.
I know, I know.
I think it's okay that we don't know yet, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, because-
It's good to open a dialogue and start having those conversations about what things could look like.
You know, I think the, they have a couple of things, um, well, Rutland Town has school choi, school choice for high schools, so that, they want to hold on to that. And I think Middletown does as well. But they also, um, have a lot of small schools. So, you know, that's, that's kind of where we kind of merge.
School choice may change with this. There are probably going to be as many alternatives with school choice. Like, will you be able to go to West Rutland if you wanted, will you be able to go to Proctor? Will you be able to go to-
Yeah, I think high school, school choice will probably continue. I think, um, there's a, a cutback on private, on private schools. Oh, I don't know, you know.
I mean, if you look down the road for-
David, David's not suggesting, I think, David, you're not suggesting that school choice is going to go away, but the schools are.
The schools are.
The smaller schools. It's just a smaller pool to choose from.
Yeah, that's exactly right, you said it much better.
You can't, yeah.
Yeah. So, it all depends on what they work out by December, beginning of December for redistricting and-
But, I think-
But they will have public hearings, so we will have an opportunity to give input into whatever plans they come up with.
I think it would be good if we cooperated with them, and we would be stronger in our message.
That's it.
And, uh, but, nobody kind of knows yet, you know, exactly how to shape things.
Yeah.
And, uh-
Yeah, we don't know.
I think that, you know, that district has a lot more change possibilities than this one does. There's some possibilities here, but-
And they're still advocating, and they're still advocating for a supervisory union structure, which means, like, our board would remain. But there would be this, I'm assuming, one superintendent for, which is kind of going back.
Yeah, it was like it was in the old days.
Yeah, right.
When we had a board of Clarendon, Wallingford, Shrewsbury.
Yeah.
And then a Mill River Board.
And then a Mill River one, and then-
And the SU Board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think the state really envisions that? I don't.
I know, Cheryl has more information about that because the superintendents met and talked about it. So hopefully at the next meeting, when she's here, she'll be able to report out on that.
If you look far enough ahead, and if, like, Proctor and, uh, West Rutland closed, some of those kids might come here to the school. And so, I think it's important that we have a dog in the fight in order to try to direct them this way. It would be in our best interest. I mean, Outer Valley's going to be competing, Rutland would be competing, and we might.
Well, I heard that Rutland said that they could take all of our kids.
Right.
Rutland High School.
So generous.
All the time.
Could take all of our kids, and they're not. So, yeah, so it's going to be, we got to work together and not-
I don't think we want that.
I don't think so, no.
But we have, once that process and those public hearings have gone through, of course, everything's, that's going to get on, go on to the next legislative session. We have two senators from Rutland here on the Education Committee, David Weeks and Terry Williams. And I think having them back before, because once they get into it, they're, they're swamped. Having them back here before, um, the legislative session has, whether it be late November or early December, and, and getting their ear and just, when, when we had them here, we were hearing from them, we were taking in information from them. It would be a great opportunity for us to communicate the other way of concerns, fears, our community's values, the concerns about town governance, that, to take back to local.
And do you think we should do it, invite them to a full board meeting like this for a discussion? Or the last time we did the community conversation, so we could just make sure we schedule, like, the second community conversation in, it's usually the second week or second Wednesday, I don't know how that'll-
It's not kibnotting, and I agree, because the, that way we could have parents, we could have a, a broader communication. We're not structured in the same way that we would be at a board meeting.
And I think we would need to make it longer than we had it before.
Agreed.
We didn't have, there's not enough time.
That was an hour when we had it, yeah, it wasn't.
If, if they're up for it, though, if we get an hour, that's great.
Yeah.
If they would-
It might have been intentional on their parts, too. They have as much of their time as they can. In theory, if you have them after the, you know, the committee comes out with the three district plans or however many district, like, that is a concrete thing to have a conversation about. You could say, if these are actual three options, or like, there's something, because right now, our problem is, is that it's just, everything is-
Nothing.
It's nothing, right? So it's like, you can't, you can argue, this is what we want, this is what we don't want. But the reality is something's going to change, and we might have to be, what, what are the bounds that they have created that we can go into? Unless right now, you know, there's a meeting on the 10th, you can make public comment on.
Yep.
You know? Because if, if by the legislation-
They're just going to approve or disapprove. Yeah, they're going to approve or disapprove by the legislative.
Well, you know, they do have a pretty terrible track record of having a committee that comes out with something and then doing the thing.
On time, or on time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, I could, I'm like, I realize we can't ask too much of them, but also, like, I feel like having their ear as they go into these discussions, like, having them heard our piece, even if we're not exactly sure what we're- But like, I do think there's some, there's value to that, and then like, having that relationship kind of developed where like, you know, we can email them and we can stay in contact and say, hey, we saw this, like, what's going on? And, and they may or may not want to build that relationship with us, but like, I don't know.
We're also in a, I'm sorry.
I was just going to, well, I would, no, if there's more discussion, go ahead.
Well, I'm just going to say that the other, the, the, so right now, with the proposed foundation system, our school district makes out better. So like, if all we say is what we really would like, is just give us a foundation. I'm glad for you to just tell me how mu, you control so much of our budget anyway. If you just tell me how much money you have currently, right now, with the foundation formula that they're talking about, we do around two thousand dollars better per student. Because of the dis, you know, of how our district runs. You know, and a lot of the other district, you know, well, because we're about in the middle. So like, there's the other half, they're going to do better than the other half of us. So like, that's also, you know, if we're talking about, we want to keep local control, my question will be, well, what is that control that you, because we're not going to have, we're not going to be forming the budget in the same way that we used to. So, when you're thinking about what is the local control that I don't want to give up, think about like that. And so like, that's how we should, if we're approaching the conversations with other places, you know, what are those values that we're, that we want to keep? Not just, well, we've always done state or town-controlled stuff, so we should keep doing town-controlled stuff. What is the benefit of having this?
Some specifics.
Right, and the reality for most of the districts is, we don't want our schools to close. But right now, we're not in that position. We could be in that position in a few years. Like, we're not in that position now. And, you know, who knows what happens? But that's, for me, that's what I'm trying to figure out, as just, as the sole, as my one board member, of just like, what are the values that, because I grew up in a place that's totally different than this. County control is the norm for most places, and then school districts are maybe bigger than that. So it's like, I'm walking this line of, I didn't grow up in this community, I appreciate that, I love my school, and I don't want to give that up. And it's like, well, whatever the state does, how do we, how do we keep the important parts important? And not get lost in the other part? I'm good at speeches, but I don't know.
Yeah, no, no, it's good conversation. So what, I, I think for a follow-up, I'll email, um, Sarah and ask her to follow up on setting up a legislative meeting similar to what we had.
Who's Sarah?
Uh, she's the Chair of the Community Engagement.
Sarah.
Yeah, Sarah Gray.
Sarah Wicker Gray, Sarah, she's-
She's the what?
Board member.
She's our board member, Sarah, she's-
Oh, this Sarah?
Yeah. Yeah, she's the Chair of the Community Engagement Committee, so that would be, no, that's okay. Um, so that would be probably the most logical committee to kind of follow up on that. And, um, and I'll help her with that. But, um, yeah, no, sorry, I, I should have added it to that, but it was the last minute this morning, I went, oh, I'm going to send this out.
It was a nice discussion, wasn't it?
Yeah, no, we had time, so that was good. Okay, well, I think, um, we don't have executive session, so I think we can adjourn. Everybody okay with that? All right. Thank you, guys, that was great.